Call if you need an order. Please rise. I ask you to join me in a moment of reflection on a business that's before us this evening. And please join me to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please take the roll.
Alderman Basso.
Here.
Alderman Begley.
Here.
Alderman Violet.
Here.
Alderman Key.
Here.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Here.
Alderman Clifford.
Here.
Alderman McGrogan.
Here.
Alderman McGovern.
Here.
Mayor, City Clerk, Treasurer, Attorney Officer.
All right, fine. Under -- we have a special presentation that's calling in in a couple minutes, but I'll keep moving, and when they do call, we will answer the phone and adjust accordingly. Under consent calendar, I've got a couple items: the approval of minutes of a city council meeting from May 7, 2021, along with the approval of payroll and a voucher list for the period ending May 14, 2021. Need a motion to --
Motion.
Move by Alderman McGrogan, second by Alderman Clifford. Discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Let's hold off the sealed bids until after next report, then. Let me give my remarks, if I may. Just kind of a matter of what's going on in the town here. In the past three weeks, I've had the pleasure to do three ribbon cuttings for new businesses that have opened up within the town, one being this afternoon. And then I've got three more scheduled for the next four weeks. So we've got six actually businesses in the last two months that are coming into our town. There are a couple more that don't necessarily want ribbon cuttings or don't have ribbon cuttings, but I think it's nice that we are recognizing the businesses that do are coming to town, a couple of them on Harlem Avenue, a couple not, but we're starting to fill the spots. And, you know, given the state we're in, the pandemic and winding down, I think it's quite of an accomplishment for a town of our size to do that. Just as a matter of fact, talking about the pandemic, we are now in the bridge phase, which is the next -- this four weeks, so we're into the first week as such. So we've got about three weeks to go on that. Any updates as far as current information that's available to the residents is being posted on our website. So people who need information on it, please contact the website, you'll find information there. June 11 is the scheduled date for the Phase Five to start. No indications are that should happen. And again, it'll be on our website as far as what will happen then. Basically, we'll get back to some sense of normality, if there is such a thing, and hopefully, you know, we in the city are making changes with our programs and with our functions as a town, you know, to accommodate the different phases. You know, we've done some things now with the bridge phase, and when Phase Five comes into play, we will also do that. So just keep in mind, again, that will all be on our website, and the information is out there for people to view. The vehicle stickers for this year are available. They're selling them at the front desk now. Again, the doors are open to the public, so they can come in and buy their vehicle stickers. The mailings will be going out to the residents this week or so, so if they haven't, some of them actually went out towards the end of last week. So we're expecting an onslaught of people to start coming in. You don't have to come in, by the way, you can pay by mail or on the website again, but, you know, we do have staff here to handle that. I would like to, you know, introduce our new city administrator who's here with us tonight, David Stroll. And David came today and was looking for some housing in town here, met with a local realtor, and why don't you just kind of give us a little background and a little bit about yourself?
A little bit more than what I anticipated, but so my name's David Stroll. I had occasion to come up today to look at housing and do some other things, and just wanted to introduce myself to the council and say thank you for the opportunity to work for the city. And I look forward to the opportunity to work with each one of you to move the city, continue to move the city forward. So I've been in local government management for over 25 years, and I look to continue that here for a long period of time.
Congratulations and welcome aboard.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
On a little bit of a personal note, just one of our employees or actually volunteers with Channel Four, Carl Germany, many of you know him as a camera crew operator. He actually operated a camera today at the ribbon cutting. He and his wife just celebrated their 60th wedding anniversary last week, so congratulations to Carl.
He beat me by 10.
I'll get there one of these days. All right. I have a motion to approve a resolution to oppose Senate Bill 2298 amending the Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act for the municipal, Illinois Municipal Code. And what that basically does in many cases is somewhat modify or in some cases abolish TIF districts, something that we've used in our town, you know, whether it be Lake Catherine, as you all know, and then also for the property where the jewel is located. And then there's anticipation that we will be using it TIF in the upcoming years for some other development that will be going in our town. So I would like to have someone make a motion for --
I'll make the motion.
Second. Moved by Alderman McGrogan, second by Alderman Key. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. We'll continue on until we get our phone call. City Clerk?
No, no report.
City Treasurer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the Treasurer's Report for the period ending April 30, 2021. General fund began the month with $3,857,351. Revenues totaled $901,152. Expenses $854,775. Other source use $3,566, giving an ending cash balance in the general fund of $3,907,295. Total of all funds began April with $19,860,462. Revenues for the month came in at $1,590,975. Expenses totaled $1,538,475. Other source use $49,541, giving an ending cash balance in all funds of $19,962,503. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Look for a motion to approve the Treasurer's Report. Move by Alderman Violet, second by Alderman McGovern. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City Attorney?
No report.
Any communications from any Alderman?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm sure that maybe this will start a bunch of us, but I think with Dan Nevesek, the former city manager, now retired, I'm sure every one of us has some nice things to say. And Dan did a great job working with so many of us and also working with the staff. And he, you know, kept the city going along with the mayor's agenda, and I just wish Dan a great retirement, and hopefully he'll be able to improve his golf score and maybe give a few shots to some of the other Aldermen.
Yeah, and Dan, I have to say, was gracious enough to meet with David today for a couple hours and, you know, and he's on call if we need him for anything. I'm sure David can, obviously he's a capable individual, can handle it, but we do have some, someone who we can call to may find out where the keys are to certain things that we don't know and things like that, but that is helpful. And Dan has, was very vital to me over the last 16 years out of my 20 doing this, and his help was much appreciated, and he was stalwart for the city, and so much so that he, you know, a number of years ago, he moved into town here, too. So, you know, so, you know, give him a lot of credit for everything he did here for us over these last couple of years, and he'll be missed, but I think we've got an individual here who could fulfill, fill the shoes and pick up the slack and go forward. So thank you. Anyone else have any communication? All right. Citizens wishing to address the council, anyone? Okay. Individual's supposed to be calling. Let's hold off for a second here if we can. Let's go on to standing committees. Alderman McGrogan?
Mr. Mayor, we have a couple of items tonight. Number 10 is a motion to approve a revision to the city's personnel policy under Section 5.3 covering drug and alcohol policy. And what this is, is just identifies with all the different recent legal changes to the marijuana laws and things, what people can and can't do that work for the city.
Okay.
I'll second.
Moved by Alderman McGrogan, second by Alderman Violet. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. The next item is number 11. That's a motion to approve a revision, once again, to the city's personnel policy under email and electronic communication. Self-explanatory, you've got to watch what you're doing if you're an employee of the city of Payless Heights. You've got to be careful to make sure that you represent the city in a professional way, and don't do anything stupid that would embarrass any one of us or any person that lives in the city.
All right. Move by Alderman McGrogan. Discussion? I mean, move, second, second?
Second. Discussion?
Yes, sir.
Chairman McGrogan, how often do we open up the personnel policy to kind of take a look at updating some of?
Well, it normally comes through the Finance Committee, and if there's no special, like, legislation that's passed during the year, we look at it like on an annual basis. But if there's something that would be pop up that would pertain to the city that Springfield passes, or maybe even the federal government that we would have to amend, then we have to go in there and, you know, do an edit or an increase, depending on which way it's going.
I see, so it's driven on new, current, rather than like a scheduled periodic review of it?
Yeah, I mean, we haven't, like, sent it out to attorneys lately that I can recall to say, you know, could you, you know, update it, or because I think, you know, it's been handled pretty well because there's new things pop up in the legislature. We, you know, address it like the way we're just doing tonight with these two particular items.
Mike Weston totally updated about three years ago.
Yeah, I mean, you know, usually, and I don't think we had any changes.
About three years ago, yeah, to answer your question.
Thank you.
Okay. And lastly, Mr. Mayor?
Need a motion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Lastly, as the Treasurer reported, with the cash on hand and your general fund as well as the all funds, which is a huge difference between the operating account, which is the general fund, and the other ones, just so people know, because occasionally we all get asked, what's the difference? Where's all that money going? Most of it's earmarked for, like, improvements within the city, you know, pipes for the city sewer and water, the rec area, other areas of the city. It's not just laying around. It's all being accounted for. It's like a reserve, it's like your tax reserve account on your homes. So just wanted to report that. That's all.
All right. Public safety?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have no report this evening.
Okay, very good. Municipal grounds and property?
Mayor Strauss, I don't have any updates on that either.
All right, very good, thank you. Planning zoning, Alderman Clifford, I mean, planning zoning now is, yeah, Alderman McGovern, I'm sorry.
No report this evening, Mr. Mayor.
All right. I have to, just so you know on the agenda, the wrong names are on the, I'm scrambling here as I'm going through the agenda. All right. Recreation is right, so it's Alderman Key.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve payment to McLeod Aquatics in the amount of $10,155.77 for algae treatment at Lake Catherine.
Second. Move by Alderman Key, second by Alderman Violet. Discussion? Roll call?
Excuse me. Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes. And then I'd like to make a motion to approve payment number five and final to Integral Construction, the amount of $15,222.35 for work completed on the Palmer Park project.
Move Alderman Key. Is there a second? By Alderman Violet. Any discussion? Roll call?
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
And then I'd like to make a motion to approve payment to Vermont Systems in the amount of $4,444 for two new receipt printers for the recreation center and a new membership card printer, and a new card printer for the pool.
Move Alderman Key, second by Alderman Violet. Any discussion? Roll call?
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Then I'd like to make a motion to approve the annual certifications for FTA, Federal Transit Administration of the Pace Vehicle Program Agreement.
Move Alderman Key, second by Alderman Violet. Any questions on that? Let's do a roll call, just as we have to.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
So even though the next item has got to do with the third and the fourth, which is what we normally have, the fireworks display and then the parade, actually, we're doing a whole week's worth of activities that week. If you look at the playbook, there's going to be a kite fly and a movie in a park and a concert in the park and all kinds of activities all week long, but this is specifically about the fireworks display and the parade on the fourth. With that, I'll make a motion to approve the July 3 and 4 schedule and plan for events and parade.
Second.
Move Alderman Key and second by Alderman Clifford. Any discussion? Just for point of information, I did talk to Matt and I told Alderman Key about this the other day, maybe to look at the fireworks, maybe get a price on updating them, maybe do an extra 15 minutes or something, I think, you know, after we dress them up a little bit, that's what I'm saying. We've gone through a lot this last year, so maybe we can do a little bit more, so it may change, is my point, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And so the pool is going to open on a normal schedule, which is just a few weeks from now. But just so everyone knows, we're following the state guidelines, but we're, that's in flux, so in the past, we've had, you have to call in advance, and there's time areas that you can reserve for you or your family. We're still doing that right now. As the restrictions are lifted by the state, we will incorporate those as quickly as we can. There are pool memberships, I believe, this year, so we're back to that. And with that, I will make a motion to approve the current proposal for 2021 pool operations.
Move Alderman Key, second by Alderman Violet. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And then finally, make a motion to approve updated summer hours of operation for the recreation center beginning Saturday, June 5 through Monday, September 6. Hours will be Monday through Friday, 5:30 AM to 9:00 PM. Saturdays, 7:30 AM to 7:00 PM. And Sundays, 7:30 AM to 5:00 PM.
Move Alderman Key, second by Alderman Violet. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And then even though it's next month, it's going to be upon us very quickly, but our first concert in the park is scheduled for June 10. And we want to certainly thank CNB Bank, which is located right at 127th, and Ridgeland as they sponsor our concerts in the park. And the concert is a group called the Feel Good Party Band. It's basically a cover band that sings and performs hits from the '60s all the way to today's music. And then the following week, there's a movie in the park. The movie in the park is at Myers Park, right behind the recreation center, and that's at dusk, and the movie is the Troll's World Tour. And that concludes my report.
Okay. All right. Roads and construction, Alderman Clifford.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to approve a warning, the 2021 Road Program Resurfacing Section 21-OOOOO-01 to M&amp;J Asphalt Paving Company for their low bid of $440,961.32.
Second.
Did you get all the O's in there? I just want to make sure. There's a lot of O's in there. More to come.
Oh, man.
Okay, roll call.
Alderman Clifford.
Oh, I got more.
Are you in favor of this?
Pardon?
It's roll call.
Oh.
Yes.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Up in the head of my sock.
I'll record that as a yes. Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
I'll take a little information on that, on that money, the background on it, is that the 2021 road resurfacing program will include pavement removal, patching, leveling binder, surface insulation, aggregate shoulders, curb and gutter removal and replacement, and associated parkway restoration on the following streets.
123rd Place, West City Limits to 76th Avenue, 71st Court, 129th to 131st, 130th Street, Harlem Avenue to 71st Court, Natoma Avenue, 127th Street to Endo Ren, Winnebago Road, Ishnala Avenue to Potawatomi Road, Manitoba Drive to Winnebago North to Potawatomi, Shoson North to Potawatomi, and Menominee Parkway. Option 1, 70th Avenue is 125th Street to 127th Street. Option 2 is 123rd Place, West City Limits to McCarthy Road and Payless Park. So that's basically what the road program's going to cover this year.
All right.
And so that's the end of that one. Next. Motion to direct the city attorney to draft an intergovernment agreement between the city of Payless Heights and a village of Payless Park for reimbursement of road surfacing outside the city limits on 123rd Place. That's the section where Payless Heights starts and Payless Heights goes into 123rd, and they've worked it out that we'll do the repair, no reimburse us.
Okay. Move Alderman Clifford, second by Alderman McGrogan. Discussion? Roll call? I mean, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay.
Next, motion to approve a commitment of $2,000 to form and then manage a Chicago-area waterway system caused watershed group required by the Pollution Control Board.
Move Alderman Clifford, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Basso. Discussion? Roll call?
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
And finally, a motion to approve Morris Engineering invoices totaling $22,451.06.
Move Alderman Clifford.
Second.
Second by Alderman Lewandowski. Any discussion? Roll call?
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Okay. Is that it? Alderman Clifford?
Yes, I was just, I just wondered, well, they all know what this Waterway Chloride Work Formation Commitment is, I take it. I've got a short thing I could read, you may explain it.
That's good.
I'll let him finish in a minute.
Okay, Dan, that's it.
All right.
End of my report.
Thank you. License permits and franchises, Alderman Lewandowski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing on the agenda this evening, but I want to reiterate what you had mentioned earlier in the meeting this evening, that the vehicle stickers are back on sale this year. As many are aware, last year during the crisis, we instituted an incentive program to shop at the local stores and restaurants for, and if you produce receipts for $100, you could use it to get your city sticker. That program is, we're not doing that program this year, so they are on sale, as the mayor said, in person or via mail or online. With that, Mr. Mayor, I have nothing else.
But the sticker does say shop local this year.
It does.
So.
It does.
Take any other tax, now that you have the money, you can spend it. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Water and Shore?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Let's, yeah, let's do Business and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to say thank you to Denise Hyker and Vince Petrosius, who were the co-chairs for this year's Adopt a Pot program. And Saturday was our planting day, so there were several score of the large flower pots that'll be distributed throughout the city that are beautifully planted. We dedicated the day's workday to Ed Dombrowski in his memory. His wife joined us, and Ed was really the backbone of that program. And still, if anyone, if any families, if your business, anyone else would like to sponsor one of our flower pots, just contact City Hall, and we'll get you in touch with the appropriate people and get that started for you. And then, as you were mentioning, Mr. Mayor, there's been a number of recent openings of businesses in town, and we've got a couple more slated in the next couple of weeks. And I just want to say thank you to those businesses. It doesn't happen overnight, you know, locations have to be found. Usually, there's a build-out. There's quite a, do you need to take that?
Yeah, we can.
Go ahead.
It's Santa.
Hello?
Sorry.
Services are wide. It's probably a wrong amp. It's telemarketing.
Yes.
All right, I'm going to connect President Preckwinkle now.
Okay. We're fortunate tonight to have Cook County President, Board President Toni Preckwinkle address us. She has to speak to us and before, President Preckwinkle, are you there? Nope, not yet.
What else would you expect?
Yeah. Hello? Hello?
Good evening, Mayor.
Yes. Hello?
Good evening, Mayor. This is President Preckwinkle.
Thank you, President Preckwinkle. Thank you for joining us today. We really appreciate it. Thanks for your time. Before you start off, I could, I'd really like to thank, sincerely thank you for letting Payless Heights become one of four agencies to be involved in an intergovernment agreement we did for the, basically redoing Ridgeland Avenue over on our east side of our town. And I think it's a very effective way for us, two different agencies to work together to accomplish a common good, you know, being, being in the forefront of what goes on with the county roads in our town. We can see, you know, some of the deterioration that we missed by at a bigger level. And this allowed us to get this, this road fixed and I really want to thank you for allowing it to happen. I think it's a great step and, you know, good things could come in the future. So thank you very much.
Oh, you're very welcome. You know, the county is responsible for relatively few of the roads and highways within the county. We have a kind of small footprint, but clearly, you know, our residents use the roads that are the responsibility of our cities, towns and villages as well. And so to the extent that we can help our municipalities keep those roads in good care, we ought to do that. So I'm happy that we're able to work together on that project.
Well, and it's right in front of a high school too, which I had concern with the safety of the high school people pulling out because the medians were all deteriorating. So this will, this will be a major step in that direction. So thank you again.
Oh, you're very welcome. You're very welcome. I'm grateful to be with you tonight and just to give you a quick update on where we are in the county. We passed our budget last year, at the end of last year. It was balanced in spite of the pandemic. And we also put aside money for an equity fund to invest in more in our healthcare, particularly around mass vaccinations and contact tracing, criminal justice reform, public transit and infrastructure of the kind we've just been talking about, economic development and infrastructure. So I'm proud of, not only that we had a balanced budget, that we were able to address some long-standing concerns in those areas. We've had a real focus over the last six months on mass vaccinations. I don't have the numbers at my fingertips of how we're doing in your community, although I can get that to you later this week. But we've had six mass vaccination sites, one in Tinley Park, I'm turning up the ones in the cell plant, one in Forest Park, one in Madison, South Holland. So we've had four kind of in a half moon in the southern part of the county. So Forest Park, Tinley Park, Madison and South Holland. And hopefully one or more of those sites are accessible for the residents of your community. We've got, we've still got a lot of work to do. We've got, I think, 37% of the people in our country have gotten one or more shots. So we've got a ways to go. Now clearly, the people who've been eligible initially are those over 65 and first responders and people in long-term care. But as we've brought the vaccination eligibility down to 12 years of age now, we hope that many more children and young adults will be vaccinated and that will help us stem the spread of the disease. Because although young people don't get sick, as sick as older adults normally, they can be vectors for the disease and spread it to, you know, parents and grandparents who are more vulnerable. So we've spent most, just to be honest, most of the last six months focused on trying to figure out how we're going to deal with the healthcare crisis that we're in. And as more and more people have become vaccinated, we're moving toward trying to figure out how we can respond more effectively to the economic collapse. We've provided cash assistance to residents. We spent $8 million on cash assistance last spring and summer and fall. We've worked on rental assistance, mortgage assistance, aid to small businesses and gig workers. And we've tried to do, tried to come at the economic collapse in every way that we possibly can and including supporting our municipalities with some of the CARES Act dollars that we got last May. Just outright cash assistance to help you with your personal protective equipment and increased first responder costs and so on. So we're grateful for the partnership that we have and we look forward to continuing to work with you.
Well, thank you. And again, thanks for taking your time out this evening to talk to us and, you know, we will continue to work with you and I think, you know, we were surrounded by unincorporated areas, so we do have a lot of, you know, communication with your agencies down there and for the most part, it's worked out quite well. So again, thank you for your staff helping us out too. We really appreciate it.
Well, thanks a lot. Thanks a lot, Mr. Mayor.
All right, very good.
I think you wanted to, boy, to make sure to remind them that we did it all with no additional new taxes.
Right.
And then in addition to that, we started an initiative working with the Cook County Health System and all those 12 and up, particularly our high schoolers and getting vaccinated. And we'd love to work with you and getting your area high school superintendent and staff to get vac, to get vaccinated. It's just a kind of coordinated effort with the surrounding community.
Well, we'd be glad to do that. We've got two high school districts that run through our town along with a private school also, so that would be, it could be very helpful to us. So thank you.
Well, good.
So I'll call to get them out.
Very good.
And get the superintendent's name so we can get them, we have a call this coming Friday at 4:00 that we can get them on and we can get the information out to them.
Very good. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Very quickly, good evening, Madam President. Alderman Lewandowski represented the third ward here in the city of Payless Heights. One of my constituents wanted, when she found out that you were going to be presenting before us this evening, wanted to make a special mention and thank you for her ability to take advantage of the Cook County Community Recovery Fund. She was a gig worker who was struggling to get unemployment and was able to secure a loan to bridge her family finances until she was able to return back to work safely. So I just wanted to make special mention of that, Madam President.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you very much. I am proud of the work that we've done to try to support, as I said, renters, homeowners who have fallen behind in their mortgages, businesses that have been challenged and needed a little help in order to keep their doors open and gig workers like the woman that you mentioned, who likewise were challenged and with a little help were able to hold on. So thank you very much. I appreciate the feedback.
Very good. All right, anybody else? All right. Well, thanks for, Madam President, we really appreciate your time and stay safe and we'll get to phase five pretty soon, so.
All right, thanks. Good evening, Madam President.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, let's continue then. Alderman Key?
So I was just saying that these companies that are, have just recently opened or are going to be opening in the next couple of weeks have been making an investment in our community. And when you consider that for the last year and a half, we have just been inundated with this, with the pandemic, it's just that much more thankful that we are to these companies for investing in our, our community.
Well, and I've said this before and I made a point today of, I'll say it too, I think what's really nice is that majorities are businesses with, one maybe, one exception, are locally owned.
Yep.
And when the larger companies, I drove down La Grange Road the other day and I noticed IHOP was closed, Denny's is closed, Baker Square is closed. These were companies that were corporately owned couldn't, could not make, were not nimble enough to make changes in order to work through this pandemic. Where local businesses, they can adjust their hours, they can adjust their staff a lot easier, more easy than the bigger companies can. So I think that says a lot for the initiative of the individuals you're talking about. So thank you.
That concludes my report. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Cable TV?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I've got a couple of things to bring up. And first, first I wanted to congratulate the guys in the back room back there. They went through another, another past month of a few, a few little hours. I mean, they only did a total of 854, 852 viewers for a total of 3482 minutes spent on the views, okay? That includes city news, events, business promotions, and this is in addition to the viewing of Channel 4 directly on TV. I also want to let you know that 20th of May at 1:00 PM, they'll be over for a live, for grand, the grand opening at the Dunkin' Donuts on 118th and Southwest Highway. Memorial Day, they're going to do a live broadcast over here at 11 o'clock in front. And it'll also be recorded for viewing on and through, during the week, okay? And they worked out with Trinity College for, because the Illinois Philharmonic was having a concert. And they worked it out with their, the people that are taping the concert so that we can have a broadcast here on Channel 4 about a week after the concert.
Excellent.
So, anybody, once again, I'll remind them, anybody really wants to get involved in any of this, we need the volunteers. Plenty, plenty, plenty of openings. Porpay, plenty of openings.
Great. All right. That's it?
That's it.
All right. Let's, we do have some bid openings that we've passed over, so if we could, from Morris Engineers, step forward.
First, this is from Aries T.I.R.Y.S. Inc.
This is for a water main on 123rd Streets.
Bid bond insurance is included. And the bid total is $163,659 even.
Next is Lindahl Brothers.
Thank you. Sure. The bid bond and insurance is included. And the bid total is $117,667.60.
Next is Shared Employment. Thank you.
Bid bond and insurance included. And the bid total is $165,560 even.
Last is Copin-Haver Construction.
Bid bonded insurance included. And the bid total is $134,977 even.
That's it?
That's it.
Need a motion to?
I move that we send these to Water and Sewer.
Move by Alvin, second by Alvin Key. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for bidding. Appreciate it. All right, old business, anyone have?
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if this is old business. This is probably new business. But did we make mention of the actual schedule for the Memorial Day services?
Well, just at 11 o'clock.
11 o'clock right over here at the, at the.
It means, yeah. It'll be live, taped live or live with tape afterwards, but yeah, so we all said there. Okay. Any other old business? Citizens wishing, just, sorry, Alvin Bassel?
New business.
New business, okay. Any citizens wishing, just a council? Yes, sir. Harland?
I see what you're saying. Oh, I'm sorry.
Hello, Bob.
Hi, Howard.
My name is Harland Wyvoda, 7640 West 135th Street. I too am going to miss Dan Iswick, but I would like to welcome the new city administrator to the city of Payless Heights. Since we have a bunch of new faces and things of that nature, I have a few things I'd like to say to a few people. In my subdivision, there's 34 of us. We all have a mailing address of Orland Park, so for the parks and recreation and the library, I'd appreciate you to let your staff know that there's residents that are going to come with driver's license that say Orland Park.
Sure.
For Jack, for Rhodes, if you get a chance, I know obviously the bids are out and things of that nature, but our road is over 22 years old and we're starting to get some pretty good potholes. And the, the school bus from Payless East exits on Oak Lane and are tearing up 135th Street. I filled it in a couple of times already for.
I'll tell the public what's going to, because we do a lot of in-house patching.
Right.
Until we can get that onto the road program.
The problem is that that's a county road at the end where it's, where I've been filling it in with the stone. It's because he's making a right-hand turn. They used to come in the opposite direction, but now they're going a different direction and they're tearing it up. And so, but I've been filling it with rock, but I can only do so much. As for the new guy here.
He's been here two years.
Just so you know.
Four. He's been here two years.
Oh, two years, okay. Just so you know, the, in our subdivision, city stickers are by honor system. You have no way of knowing whether or not we get a new car to buy a city sticker because we have an Orland Park mailing address. So that's, it's strictly on an honor system, so if somebody decides they don't want to get a city sticker, they're really not going to. Just to let you know. And then also, I've been in contact with Payless Township. I'm trying, and I've been in contact with the Orland Park Post Office. I've been trying to get a second ZIP code for Payless Heights. Orland Park has two, two of them. Crestwood has several. Alsup has a few. Because recently, I contacted my insurance company. I said, how come I pay so much in insurance nowadays? I mean, my price keeps going up, going up. He said, it's because of your ZIP code. I said, well, yes, my ZIP code is Orland Park 60462, but I live in the city of Payless Heights. And they said, well, no, you live in Orland Park. And I said, no, I live in the city of Payless Heights. And so I sent them a copy of my tax bill, which says, we live in the city of Payless Heights 60463, but our mailing address is Orland Park. And my insurance went down $120, okay? So to let the other residents also in my community be aware that they could get a little bit of a reduction in their, their insurance bill if they let their insurance agent know that we are Payless Heights residents and not Orland Park. Also, when I was on the, working on the committee for the, for the school district, a long time ago, I made a deal with them that we were going to go, our children were going to go to Payless East. We put the additions on those schools so our children could go to Payless East because that's our police department, that's our fire department, that's our mayor, that's our alderman. But because they believe we live in Orland Park or unincorporated, they make us go to Payless West. Payless West is a long ways away from our subdivision for us to have to get on the bus for all our kids. And we've got a lot more children in our subdivision than we ever had. And I think it's kind of unfair that, you know, you go through life and then when you go to Payless South, you don't know any of the kids that used to be, that lived right down the street from you because they're making you go all the way to West. Yes, West is a very good school, but Payless East is in our town, in the town that we live in. And I think the kids should go to the same school. You've got kids going from Worth, you've got kids from Payless, Payless Hills going to Payless East, but the kids who live in Payless Heights go to Payless Park. I think it's kind of unfair. So, and again, again, I want to thank you and congratulations and thank you, Mayor.
Well, Harland, maybe two things we should do. We look again at getting ZIP code changed, okay? And secondly, the school district, I can make a call and see if I can get that, that's a school district call as far as where you.
No, I know that, but it's just that, you know, it just needs to be out. It needs to be out there because for some reason, it's, you know, ever since, you know, the, the old, she passed away a long time ago and her and I were, when we made that agreement, you know, they kind of believed that we don't live in Payless Heights and nobody reminds them. Even, even when we go to the rec center and we go to the library, we go to the pool, they tell us we're not residents.
Okay.
And it's kind of, you know, so if there was something that we could finally someday do, because I want to live in Payless Heights.
I agree.
I don't want to live in Orland Park.
Do you want to make my third request to the post office to change the ZIP code?
Well, you don't have to. Well, the thing is there is, so you understand, is it's, it's where the mail comes from.
I understand.
The mail, the mail comes from.
Your mail right now.
Comes from the.
Correct. It should be coming, it should be coming out of the work office down at 111.
Well, if they give us a second ZIP code, because I do put Payless Heights 60462 on my stuff and I do get it.
First of all, you're not going to get a second ZIP code, it's not big enough, but we could, we can get it into the, our ZIP 60463. I mean, that's the way to do it.
Okay, well, I mean, yeah, I mean, how would they know to send it to the, to that post office? The last time, remember, one resident shot it down on us.
Well, let's revisit, let's revisit that, that's the way to do it.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, sure. Right. New business?
On that point too, that this is really a big issue because he identified several items there, with the stickers, the schools.
Oh, yeah.
And everything else. You know, we tried extensively to get this thing changed and Harland, I think you know this, that, and Alderman Kamarski, there was like, she was really on this particular situation for like a couple of years, trying to get the post office, which seems to be behind the whole situation. They don't want to like change the, change it. And I mean, I've actually even had experiences over there when we're running for election, being part of the fourth ward, I thought, that people said, I can't sign your petition because I vote in Orland Park. And so, you know, even just some of the things you said, you know, I agree with you. It's very unusual because in some aspects, you're saying, you know, don't expect the people to buy the stickers, it's kind of on the honor system. On the other hand, that same person might want to go to the pool, you know, so it's almost like the left and the right, you know, two wrongs are going on here. And I just think that we have to really straighten this out and get this thing back in to the city because what a lot of people don't realize that for, for a long time, many years ago, it's probably more than 20 years ago, that the city repaved all the streets, did everything and covered all the costs, it put the water in and spent a lot of money. And then to have, I'm not even sure where the, you know, and maybe somebody here does, but I should, being on the finance committee, that where the tax dollars trickle to.
That's what I was talking about, yeah.
Do they trickle to Orland Park or do they trickle into Payless Heights where they belong?
I think the questions are brought up and I think we'll investigate.
Payless Heights did get that corrected because of the last time that we, we had that, that conversation. Payless Heights did get to where, that's why it says on our tax bill now that we live in the city of Payless Heights 60463. It says right on our tax bill.
It's a post office.
It's a tax thing.
It's a post office thing. Yeah, yeah. I agree. Okay, yeah. All right, we'll, we'll get on top of it. Thanks.
Just backtracking to what you said about the new businesses, I stopped in house to home this evening and they've completely redone the interior of their space and they're, they have a new fresh business going there. They, I've talked to the proprietor and she's offering art classes of specific nature in that facility also. So the bottom line is obviously stop and buy a custard, stop and buy a snow cone, stop and buy a burger, stop in and say hi to the house and home, stop in, whether you do or I talked to the proprietor, and she's offering art classes of specific nature in that facility also. So the bottom line is obviously, stop and buy a custard, stop and buy a snow cone, stop and buy a burger, stop in and say hi to the house and home, stop in, whether you do or not, like Dunkin' Donuts, because the, you know, the bottom line is, if we don't, then, then we won't.
Right.
And we won't have those things, and, and we could probably make a big difference if, if we and all of our neighbors knew that we were patronizing some of the, all of the businesses in town.
Yeah, I brought a candle there today, by the way, so, okay. Anything else? Entertainer, motion adjourned? I'm sorry.
Relating to what Alderman Key said about how they dedicated today to Ed Dombrowski and all he's done, they brought this up once before, but it's also some other people in town, he asked me to bring it up again, about maybe, since Ed was pivotal in organizing the landscaping, when I was over there with them planting at the art park, that maybe we could put a dedication sign up there.
Yeah, I'm trying to come up with an idea.
The Ed Dombrowski City of Payless Heights Art Park.
Right.
If it was appropriate, and if anybody has any objections, Sam, now, but.
I'll, I'll give you my idea, I've got an idea.
But I just thought it'd be a good honorarium to, for all the things he has done there. I remember spending two days out there with him, and my hands, and he's taking up plants and that, and they're still growing, by the way, but that's credit to him and his leadership over how to do it, but I think it'd be a good thing to do.
I agree. All right. Entertainer, motion adjourned?